Good evening. What a handsome group of people. And thank you for taking time out of your busy afternoon and evenings to be with us tonight. For those of you that don't know, I'm Eric Tungate. I'm the city manager of the city of Oak Park. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to introduce a few people in our audience. And I want to start with, I see three of my bosses here. I don't see the other two. But if we could, Councilmember Keisha's speech is here. Councilmember Carolyn Burns. And Mayor Marion McClellan. I also want to introduce our esteemed state representative, Robert Wittenberg, from the 27th District, right here. And I have some folks from the state of Michigan. Jason Cato, could you please stand up? Jason, thank you for being here. Sharon Martin, from the Liquor Control Commission. Sarah Weber. Hi, Sarah. Matt Chinowith, from MDOT. I have my Public Safety Director, Steve Cooper, in the back. Our wonderful City Clerk, Ed Norris. I have the Assistant City Manager, Kevin Yee, over here. Our Director and Deputy Director of our Department of Technical and Planning, Rob Barrett and Dave DeCosta. Our Communications Director, Jocelyn Davis, is in the back coming out right now. There she is. I have our Recreation Director, Julie Hall. Our Assistant to the City Manager, Crystal McLean. Who am I missing? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, she's hot. Look at her. Kathy Lindroth. Okay, our Deputy Treasurer, Kathy Lindroth. Thank you. I want to just kick off tonight's Town Hall. And again, thank you for being here. And we're going to start out with a conversation about the road tax proposal. And to get things started, I want to ask our colleagues from MDOT and our State Representative, Wittenberg, to come on up here and we can do a brief overview and then we'll go into questions and answers. Thank you.
I'll start. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. So, May 5th is a very important day. I'm sure you're all aware, and that's why you're here. And we appreciate you being here. It's a, well, some of you have heard a lot about this proposal, and there are a lot of moving parts. So, we want you to know everything that is going to go into this proposal, and that's why we are holding these Town Hall meetings. And we have another one. So, for those that are at home watching and those that aren't able to be here, you can let your family and friends know they can come by the second Town Hall as well. Our roads here in Michigan are atrocious, just to say it as nicely as possible. It went from originally, you know, Michigan was kind of a laughingstock, and it was a butt of jokes about how bad our roads were, and then it's gotten to the point of they're dangerous. And it's something that both Democrats, Republicans, everyone agrees that this is something that needs to be addressed. So, this is, that proposal to address our crumbling roads. But additionally, there are things built in, and I'm not sure if you'll be able to speak to, okay, all the other parts involved with this. And actually, real quick, Mayor Protam Levine is here as well. So, just want to recognize you. You came in and sitting back there. So, I am a fan of this proposal. I understand a sales tax, and he'll give you all the details. So, I'll give you kind of my brief overview, and then he can give you the specifics, and then I can answer any questions afterwards as well. It is a 1% sales tax increase. That is a regressive tax, but the tax doesn't affect your prescription medications, it doesn't affect your groceries, and it doesn't affect your rent or mortgages. And sales tax used to be, or it is currently, I should say, I'm jumping far ahead here. Sales tax is currently, when you go to the pump, you are paying sales tax. And that sales tax goes to our general fund, goes to our school aid fund. So, everything you're, you know, not everything you pay at the pump goes towards the roads. And so, this is a proposal that will fix that, and then everything that you pay at the pump will go toward the roads. But there were some things that we need to, there was money being lost in other areas and needed to be made whole. One is, I see Manakam Hoydo, who's here. He's on the school board here in Oak Park. Money that will go back to our public schools, that will go to our schools, which is very important in my mind. And also, there's language in there that makes it so that it restricts that money that goes to school aid stays with our K through 12 schools. Currently, universities can actually get to that money, but this will make it so that it's exclusive for K through 12 and some community college. Money's built in for the earned income tax credit, and it goes back to, it's restored to the rate from 2011. And that's really important for working-class families and low-income families. So, that's another thing that's built in. Money for public transportation. Money for our local communities, local municipalities. And Eric can, and I'm sure, answer any questions and talk more specifically on that. And then, we have the highest truck weight in the country, truck weight limit in the country. And I think you can probably attest to that, right? We have the highest, because it's the federal, and we were grandfathered in, so there's actually a standard elsewhere, but we were grandfathered in, so we have the highest weight in the country. This unfortunately won't bring the weights down, but it'll add fees. Okay, good. I'm making sure I understand all this right, and I do. And so, it will add fees for those trucks driving on our roads that are carrying these heavy loads. Again, there are a lot of different things built in. Public transportation, money for public transportation, which in this area is essential in my mind. And I think most people would agree, we need a viable public transportation option in the metro Detroit area and Oak Park specifically. So, a lot of things involved in this proposal. I will be here to answer any questions. But again, I support this proposal. And kind of like the last thing, while all those things, I think, are great, the kind of cherry on top is the alternative is bad. Because as of right now, there is no alternative. And we go back to square one, and we have to figure out something in Lansing, and the way the legislature is made up right now, I am kind of scared as to where that money's going to come from. They might cut from our schools again, cut from our local communities, and various other things that are so vital and so important that I just wouldn't be able to support that. So, really, really support this proposal. And again, appreciate you all being out here. And I'll let Matthew from MDOT, are you from MDOT?
Yes.
Right? So, Matthew will discuss a little further. So, thank you for being here, Matthew.
Thank you. Thanks, Representative Wittenberg. I'm going to bring up a, this is purely the facts. This presentation right here is, first of all, I'm Matt Chinowith. I'm the Deputy Region Engineer here for MDOT, responsible for Wayne, Oakland, Macomb, and St. Clair Counties. And because I am an employee of MDOT, I cannot advocate either way for this. I'm here strictly to educate. Everything you're going to see in the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to put up here is strictly the numbers and the facts having to do with this. Okay? So, okay, so here we go. So, Michigan, you may hear certain things about how Michigan pays the highest, you know, taxes at the pump compared to other states. If you break it down in terms of the money that goes towards transportation, the amount of gas tax that goes towards transportation, we're actually one of the lowest in the Midwest. And the reason that is, is because previous tax policy tied school aid funding and also local agency funding, two portions of the gas tax. So, you're not only paying a portion to go towards roads, there is a piece that's there. It's about 19 cents a gallon right now. But for every gallon you put in, you're also funding, you know, stuff that's going to the general fund, stuff that's going into the school aid fund, and funding for local governments. Okay? So, here is the proposal. We're going to remove the 6% sales tax from fuel. It still has the 19 cents fuel tax, the normal fuel tax, but the 6% that goes towards local agencies and goes toward schools comes out. Now, this is where, and I want to draw the line between the gas tax and the sales tax. This is where the sales tax comes in. This is why it has to go to a vote before the people, because the legislature cannot act to increase the sales tax. That has to be by majority vote. So, the legislature could have said, let's make sure we have all the funding we need for roads. Let's take all of the tax that we put on gas and put it directly to roads. Well, that leaves a major shortfall in school funding and funding for local agencies. So, that's where the sales tax comes in. Okay? So, first, we're going to remove the 6% sales tax from fuel. So, it's going to be the same 14.9% rate on the wholesale cost of gas, meaning whatever the wholesalers purchase the gas for, that's what's taxed, not what comes to the pump that you put in your cars. So, to give you an example, right now, you're going to pay 19 cents sales tax on gas, or you're going to pay your 19 cents tax on gas. Then, if you add that 6%, and I did a calculation based on, these are last year's numbers, but if you're paying $3.49 per gallon of gas, you have a 19 cents gas tax, then we tax another 6% on top of that. That's another 18, 19 cents. So, you're actually paying a total of about 37, 38 cents in total tax on your gas. Now, if we just go to a 14.9 tax on the wholesale rate of gas, that's 41 cents. Okay? So, it's an actual increase in the tax that you're paying on gas of about 4 cents. So, that's not a huge hit, but it's a hit nonetheless. As the gas prices go lower, for today's price on gas, since it's a little lower than, you know, $3.49, that equates to about a 12 cent increase per gallon, which again, it's not a very large increase, but it is an increase nonetheless. Diesel fuel, that's got a 15% or 15 cent tax, and then the, since the sales tax is going away, the 14.9% equals about 46 cents for diesel fuel. Registrations will change a little bit. As you know, right now, as the value of your car depreciates, the amount that you pay for your registration goes down three times within the life of the vehicle. That will no longer be the case. Starting, it doesn't, if you own an existing car, you're fine. It's for any car that's purchased after 2016, your registration fees will never go down. They'll be the same across the board. We also have, as Representative Wittenberg said, we have an increase for trucks over 26,000 pounds. The federal gross vehicle weight standard that they use is about 80,000 pounds. Here in Michigan, we allow trucks up to 170,000 pounds. It's not something that we want to do. We design our roads for it. We design our bridges for it. But there's a large amount of our economy is based on the trucking that goes up and down I-94, to and from, you know, the Bluewater Bridge and the Ambassador Bridge. So, trucking is a major part of our economy. So, what does it mean for the transportation agencies? So, it's going to mean $1.2 billion per year additional that goes into the Michigan Transportation Fund. Now, this is split up between what goes to MDOT, the state, what goes to local agencies. It's still per the normal Act 51 distribution formula, so none of that changes. It's still 39% that goes towards MDOT, and 61% goes to the locals. But what we're going to see is, in the first couple of years that this passes, we're going to use some of this money, before it actually goes into our capital program, we're going to use some of this money to pay down debt service on bonds from Build Michigan 1, Build Michigan 2, that was done in the 1990s. We actually are still paying on those bonds. It comes right off of the top, so what we pay on bonds right now affects what we can put into our capital outlay programs. So, we're going to pay those off right away. We also receive about $110 million per year from the general fund to help match federal aid. We don't like that. Traditionally, MDOT has been able to operate without receiving any money from the general fund. So, this increase will allow us to take that $110 million per year, that'll go back into the general fund, and our funding alone will be able to match all federal aid. And just for those of you that are not familiar with the cost of building a road project, for every $1 that's spent on a road project, approximately 20% is paid for by you as a citizen of Michigan, and 80% is paid for by you as a federal taxpayer. So, there's 20% that's paid by Michigan and 80% that's paid by the federal government. So, again, you may be hearing things that, well, it's not all going towards roads right away. That's true and it's not true. It's going to pay down our debt service, which frees up money in the later years for us to put directly towards our capital program. So, here's the impact for other public agencies, and this has to do with the sales tax. Again, everything I've just spoke of is the gas tax. You're not necessarily voting on a gas tax increase. You're voting on a sales tax increase, and all of these other elements are a part of it. As Representative Wittenberg said, it's kind of, it's a complex issue here. So, $300 million per year go into the school aid fund. $110 million per year for revenue sharing for local agencies and local governments. 173 million more per year into the general fund. This is important. This is what we use for rainy days. This is what we use to help balance the budget. It's important that the general fund is flush. And then, $20 million per year for DNR marinas, ORV trails. And the way that comes in is, when you're in a marina and you put gas in your boat, there's a small amount of tax that you pay for that. Same thing if you're putting gas in your snowmobile. Sales tax rises from 6% to 7%. Fuel tax increase, again, the sales tax is removed from gas, so it rises, the sales tax on gas actually rises, or the fuel tax, excuse me, rises from 19 cents to 41 cents. But keep in mind, the previous sales tax you were paying was an additional 19 cents plus or minus. So, that's 19, 19, that's 38. So, under this, it's actually an additional 3 cent increase you're going to see. That's about it. The earned income tax credit increases from 6% to 20%. And again, the registration fees do not go down for all vehicles bought after 2016, and it actually ends up being about a 30% increase if that new vehicle goes to 2018. This has to do with the diesel fuel. The diesel fuel tax rises pretty much in proportion to gasoline. There's no registration fee increase on trucks under 26,000 pounds. There's a registration fee increase of $600 per year for a typical 800, or 80,000 pound, a heavy truck, and it actually goes up from there. Sales tax rises on retail purchases. So, as Representative Wittenberg said, it doesn't affect groceries, it doesn't affect medicine. We want to be transparent. So, you're trusting us with more of your money. How do we, how do we use it? We're going to increase the use of pavement warranties by local units of government. MDOT has used pavement warranties over the years. If the payment doesn't last as long as it should, the contractor comes in and addresses it on his dime. We're going to be expanding that out to local agencies. County road agencies are required to use competitive bidding for all projects over $100,000. Townships contributing more than 50% of the cost of county road projects may require competitive bidding. And performance-driven maintenance contracting, we're talking contracting that out, will be implemented by the seven largest road agencies, which is, of course, the Michigan Department of Transportation, Kent County, Macomb County, Oakland County, Wayne County, and the city of Detroit. It's all tied together. You're voting, again, you're voting on a sales tax increase, but everything that I just talked about is tied together in this one bill. We have, again, as the Department of Transportation, we're not advocating at all. We want to educate. We have tons of information on our website about road funding. We also have these Reality Check series that we talk about. How does road funding work? And what are the federal constraints? And it's a very, basically, we're operating under a system that was designed, the way to fund roads was designed in 1956, where the average, you know, the average rate of fuel consumption was, you know, 8 to 12 miles per gallon. We've got higher-efficiency cars now, electric cars, so the highway formula is a bit out of date. And that's changes that need to happen at the federal level. Again, on our road funding website, we've got, it's all information. Okay? What are the actual costs? What does it cost you? What are the costs in states surrounding Michigan to fund roads? We have all of that in there, so you can see what does it cost Michigan versus what does it cost Ohio or Indiana. And then, we also have our Reality Check series, which are videos that are on our website. So, I definitely encourage everybody, if you have questions, please go to our website and check the information out. And with that, that's all I had. Again, I just wanted to present the facts. I didn't want to have any commentary. And we'll take questions. Yes, sir? There's a microphone right there in the back.
Hi, I'm Leonard Schwartz. One thing I know about the proposal is that it's very long, it's very complicated, and vague. Now, on the ballot, you get this short summary, about 100 words, but the, just the tie-in bills from the legislature, I heard, are over 40,000 words long, plus whatever is in the changes to the Constitution. I went online this weekend to find out the actual wording of the changes to the Constitution, as well as those six or eight 40,000-word tie-in bills. I went to both the Secretary of State's website and to the Michigan Legislature website. I can't find the stuff. And I would like to know, you know, I see all these summaries, newspapers and on, you know, Michigan.gov summaries. I would like to read the actual words that are in the proposed constitutional amendment, as well as all these additional tie-in bills. And I don't know where to get it. Someone know?
You want to address that? You want me to address that?
Do you want to address the previous session or this session?
Both.
Oh, both?
Yeah. I can't find it.
And just so y'all, if you don't, go ahead. You have the microphone. I'll come up here and join you.
Because it's on TV.
Yep, yep. Sorry. Make sure I'm on the microphone. And for those here, and those at home, I can let them know as well, but Barbara Winter is here in the audience, and she is the District Director for the 27th House District, and worked with my predecessor, with Ellen Kogan Lipton, and does a great job with helping out, you know, any constituent issues and concerns. So, that's who, in case at home you couldn't hear on the microphone, but that's who's trying to help out in the background. I'll let Matthew address this first, and then I can.
Yeah, typically, in terms of the language of the bill, that you're in the right spot. You're reading something that is law. So, it's written by lawyers, and it's meant to be law. It does reference other MCLs and, you know, I don't want to say that it's complex, but it is. It's a law. It's very complex. That's why we're out providing the summaries. And what you're seeing in here is me as an engineer, because I'm not a lawyer, it's pulling that information out and presenting the hard numbers, because that's typically what you want to know. Okay? Regardless of what the language says, how much extra am I paying? What do the numbers mean? That's what's in here. The numbers are also in the bill, but it is, as you mentioned, it's lengthy.
And we can send you that information. We will, if you reach out to, and anyone that has specific questions, Barbara, or reach out to my office, and anyone at home, again, I encourage you to reach out to our office and any, specifically about this or any other questions, we're always here to help. So, we will get you that information. Yes?
Do you want to, actually, do you want to go to the microphone so people at home can hear? Yeah, sorry.
I think a good place for you to go to get that information you're looking for, you're looking for the two bills that are tie-barred to the road funding bill, correct? If you go to the House of Representatives website and then go to the bills, put in the bill number for the transportation bill. You know what the bill number is?
I don't know it off the top of my head, no.
So, that's why we'll get that, we'll get the bill number so we can send you the link or send you the direct information.
If you put in that bill number, then the bill will actually come up, and then you will see different summaries, different wording, different copies of the bill. And then, there will be a House summary, then there will be a Senate summary. And then, those are in layman's terms, where you and I can read them and understand them.
And we're going to, if you do have a question, I guess, at this point, we'll ask so that people at home can, if you don't mind lining up at the microphone, so that everyone at home can hear your question as well. So, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a similar question, but I want the exact number, the exact language, not the summary. You had said, when you spoke previously, that $300 million per year is supposed to go to student aid fund, and that money cannot be taken out. So, I would like to see the exact language, not the summary.
So, that's the same thing, then. We'll send that over to you, if you don't mind.
To who?
If you, if you just take, Barbara will give you her information. Reach out to our office, either call and we'll send it to you, or email, and we'll send that over to you.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And again, we'll ask you, yep, go ahead, if you have questions, to just line up back there so that we can have you on the microphone, so everyone at home can hear as well.
Great. Thanks for being here. My name is Phil Lombard. I've got three points to make, I guess. The first one is, I hear people misspeak, it sounds like. It's described as a 1% sales tax increase. That's not accurate. It's a 1 cent sales tax increase. The percentage is 16.7%. That is, we're paying 6 cents, going up to 7. That 1 divided by 6 is 16.7. So, it is a 16.7% sales tax increase, not a 1, it's a 1 cent, not 1%. It's 1 cent, not 1%. So, that's way different. All right? Okay, here's, you had mentioned earlier, next thing. You had mentioned about additional, not additional, they're just increasing the registration fees for trucks. I understand that 100%. People were talking about overweight trucks earlier. There is not an additional overweight fee. The fees for overweight trucks, and I'm talking about single trip, multiple trips, are the same. They haven't raised those. Okay, so there's a truck fee, and then there's an overweight truck fee. Back in December, the MDOT spokesperson, I forget his name, mentioned that about axle loading. I'm good with axle loading. He was talking about 164,000-pound trucks with 11 axles. But the fact is, the last three years of physical data for single-truck trips shows that the median axle for those weight trucks is 6, is 8 axles, excuse me. They're, so they're driving on 8 axles, and he's lending credence to the idea that they're spreading the weight over 6 axles. It's just not true. I've got the data from the last three years. So, that's.
Yeah, I can, I can address that a little bit. We do, we don't limit total vehicle weight in Michigan. We limit axle weight. And so, the particular configuration of truck you're talking about, yes, at those weights, it has to have, that's the 11-axle truck. Outside of that, we require special permit vehicles, and these vehicles have to be led by a, whether it's, if it's an overweight vehicle, or overweight, or over height, they have to pay permit fees to the department to allow us to use the roads. They have to have a chaser in front and behind. So, those types of vehicles are handled a little bit separately. They have to pay permit fees to the department.
I understand that. And that's $50 or $100 a year for as many trips as you want. It doesn't matter how heavy they are. It doesn't matter how far they drive. However, the fee still is $50. Nothing like any other state around here. All right? The other thing I wanted to add, you know, now we're, you know, we're giving a pass for these special overweight vehicles. Oversized is another thing. I don't care about the oversized. I know you do. But overweight is what damages concrete. And I'm, and looking at the American Association of State Highway Officials standard is X to the fourth. It's not built in any formula we use. And that's a little geeky.
Well, the formula that we use for our pavement designs, we're transitioning into this mechanistic pavement design, which is probability and statistics-based, meaning if you have a truck that weighs a certain amount in year one of your design, there is a 25 to 50% probability that you'll be dealing with heavier trucks in the future. So, both for our roadway designs and for our bridge deck designs that are purely structural for the beams, we take into account the fact that those weights could increase. There's variability built into the factors.
Do the fees vary according to the weight of the truck? For the special permit?
If it's a permit, yeah.
They vary according to the weight of the truck?
Well, what it ends up being is, we would have to review the axle configuration and all of that additional, you know, staff time at MDOT to review these things and permit them. That takes additional time.
Right. But you don't charge additional fees for a truck that weighs a million pounds than one that weighs 800,000 pounds?
Well, we don't have to, because we make sure that the axle weights are within the allowable for Michigan. If they don't, we make them add more axles. And we've had situations like over with the Marathon Refinery in Detroit, where they wanted to move a huge pressure vessel, and we made them bring in a trailer that had 21 axles.
Okay, that doesn't happen very often. Let me ask another question related, and then I'll quit. Yeah, just one more. One of the bills that is tied up into this proposal is that owners of vehicles that are partially powered by electricity pay an additional $25 registration fee, in addition to registration fee.
Correct.
What I want to know is, why do vehicles such as, and I'll use myself an example, because I'm one of the drivers of one. because I'm one of the drivers of one, I drive a Prius. I don't plug it into the wall. Any kind of money I pay, I can only get by buying gasoline. Therefore, I am not, and other folks who have similar kind of vehicles, I am not evading any gasoline tax. I am not evading any fuel tax. I can't plug it into the wall if I wanted to. However, I have to pay an additional $25 fee just because I get good gas mileage. Now, if you want to charge us more money for getting good gas mileage, you could charge more money for the Chevy cruise vehicles that get 35, 40 miles to the gallon. I just don't understand why I need to pay $25 more because the only way my car is powered is by purchasing fuel at the pump. Can you speak to that?
I can speak to it in terms of it being, think of the $25 as a, as a user fee. The way that the highway bill is written is that for every gallon of gas you buy, you're paying somewhat of, of a user fee, even though we don't charge a user fee for roads, it comes out of the gas. If you're not purchasing as much gas, but you're still driving the same miles on the system, there has to be something that balances that out.
Why don't you get vehicles that get 33 miles to the gallon? There are all kinds of vehicles that get that now that are not electric vehicles. And, and also then, if that's the case, why don't you then, for trucks that get 17 miles to the gallon, why don't you give them some money back? If the ones that get good gas mileage have to pay more money, why don't the trucks that don't get good ma, gas mileage get money back if it's that?
Yeah, I didn't write it, but all I can speak to is the intent. And again, if you have a truck that gets 17 miles per gallon, they're paying their fair share because they're filling up every 400 and plus miles at, you know, whatever the cost.
If you get 25 miles to the gallon, are you then not paying your fair share?
No, I, I think, I think you would be, yes.
If you get 29 miles per gallon, are you paying your fair share?
Well, I, I can say that I, I don't know what the cutoff is in terms of miles per gallon and what it is. All it, all, all the legislation says is there's two tiers. There's the hybrid like you have and that's $25 and then pure plugins is $75.
I understand that, no, 100 percent. You know, in nine, in 2012, there was a Buick Regal that is a hybrid that gets 29 miles per gallon. But they're going to have to pay an extra. There are Chevy Silverado trucks that get 22 miles to the gallon and they're, um, and they're hybrids. So they've got to pay an additional $25. So they're getting crummy gas mileage, paying more gas, yet you want 25 more dollars for those trucks. I don't get that, particularly in light of the overweight vehicles. Sorry, I've used up too much time.
Thank you, Phil. Um, and Councilmember's speech, do you want to, okay, so someone, you go ahead and then you'll come up afterwards. Thank you.
I don't really have a question. I just, I just want to say that I'm very upset with the legislature generally. There was no need for this whole mess, except that the legislature doesn't have enough nerve to put their name on a tax bill because they're so afraid that they won't get reelected. All they do is spend their time running around trying to either get reelected or get into their next job and they don't seem to care about doing the business that they were sent there to do. So now they palm it off on us and then they stick all of this other junk in here. Now, everybody who's been on the roads anywhere in this state in the last four or five years at least knows that the roads are terrible and need to be fixed. So we're essentially being blackmailed. The only way you can get your road fixed is to pay for all this other stuff as well. I don't like that. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right and it wouldn't have been all this controversy. If they had simply said, put a bill that said half a cent gas tax increase strictly for the roads and been done, you wouldn't have to have these meetings. But they don't want it, you know, there was an, there was a little editorial piece in the Sunday paper, I think, uh, two weeks ago, that said that if this proposal fails, the next proposal should be to make our legislature part-time. Frankly, I think that should be the next proposal, win, lose or draw.
Let, let me address that, uh, if you don't mind. Uh, I appreciate you saying that and I agree with you. Uh, I think that the legislature, uh, punted is, is, is the way to describe it, that we're elected to make tough decisions and we should make those decisions. Unfortunately, I wasn't there. I didn't have any input. I didn't start until January. Um, but believe me, I think that something should have been done and it shouldn't have been put back onto the voters. Um, but just to give you a, a quick background of what happened, there was a proposal, there were two proposals. There was one in the House and there was one in the Senate. And the one in the Senate was supported by the Senate Democrats, the Senate Republicans, the House Democrats and the governor. Everyone supported it other than, uh, the Speaker of the House, a Republican Speaker of the House. And the Republicans' plan would have taken money away from local municipalities and taken money away from schools, which I would never have supported. None of the Democrats would have supported. Even the Senate Republicans weren't supporting. It was just the, uh, House Republicans that were supporting it. Somehow, he must have, he must be a great negotiator. Somehow, everyone else was on one side, he was on the other, and this is what we got. So this would have been addressed, but unfortunately, uh, you can thank Jace Bolger, to, to be completely honest. It's unfortunate, but that was the case. And it should have been addressed and they would have done just the wholesale tax, they did, just the gas tax, they would have addressed it. It would have been a one-issue thing. It should have been taken care of. It wasn't. So I am with you. I share your frustration, um, but this is what we are presented with right now. And I, I don't want to get into a political debate, but on, on part-time legislature, um, you know, my, my, my thoughts are, we don't have part-time problems, so we shouldn't have a part-time legislature. Additionally, if you go to a part-time legislature, you're going to have only people running who are either retired, independently wealthy, um, you're not going to get a good cross-section of the population representing you. So I, this is an issue, I, again, I understand your frustration, but...
That's right.
Well, that, I, I, I agree with you on that one as well, though. Unfortunately, the state, as, as a, a bleeding heart Democrat, uh, unfortunately, we have a Republican, uh, governor, Republican House, Republican Senate, uh, Supreme Court is Republican, Secretary of State, Attorney General, were, were run by Republicans. And they run the state and unfortunately didn't do anything about addressing this, sent it back to the voters. I can promise you if, the, well, I can't promise you, but I would hope that if the Democrats were in charge and if I was in there, I would have done something differently. So I appreciate you saying that and I am with you 100 percent. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Brooks. I'm a election inspector. I've lived in Oak Park for seven years. I'm a retired educator and, uh, I can piggyback on this gentleman here. Uh, I was ve, very much upset when I heard about what was going on with this, um, uh, road tax, uh, proposal. Um, also welcome Representative Whittemore to our district. And, but my, my concern is this, if Proposal One does not pass, I think that our legislatures need to go back and, like, to the drawing board, brainstorm, come up with some other proposals, a Plan B and a Plan C. The reason why I say that is that back in the day when I was an educator, we had Proposal A, uh, which was a, a increase on our sales tax from four percent to six percent for funding our schools, if you recall back some of the senior citizens who were in the room. And, um, I liked the idea, England was, uh, the mayor and, um, the governor, and then of course, there have been 12 times that the voters had voted down a proposal to change the, uh, school district funding because it was so inadequate and, um, it didn't address the poor, uh, schools as well as the rich schools in terms of them being equitable. I liked the idea back then, I, I went online, I researched and I found out that they gave us two proposals to vote on. That was in March of 1994. All I'm saying is that if this doesn't work, we want our legislatures to do the hard work, get back to the drawing board and come up with a backup plan, Plan B and Plan C. And put those two plans on the proposal ballot, uh, for November, a general election, if it comes to that. So I'm just sending a message. I'm asking you, you take that back to your, you know, coworkers, your colleagues, and hopefully we can come up with some other ideas in terms of how we can fix our roads. We know they need to be fixed. We know we're going to pay more money, but there should be some other options that we can look at. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment and I agree. I'm with you on that as well.
Yes, um, I certainly want to echo, I echo some of the sentiment in the room.
If you don't mind introducing yourself, please.
Yes, Councilmember Keisha's speech out of Oak Park. Um, I echo some of the sentiment in the room in that I am very disappointed in what the legislator left us with, but being a glass half-full type of person, I do see an opportunity for the voters, uh, in this, and I actually support Prop One for one of the reasons is I understand the revenue sharing, um, opportunity that we have. Um, if Rep, if, um, Prop One passes, I just wanted to share with the, uh, Oak Park community what that would mean for us in numbers as far, because I just left SimCog, um, a meeting with the General Assembly of the southeastern, uh, community that we're a part of. Um, right now, we have 1,645,000 that we collect, roughly. It's, the exact number is 1,645,256 dollars. Um, if and when hopefully, uh, the Prop One passes, that number would change to 2,731,255 in the first year. And that's a lot of money for revenue sharing for one community. Um, certainly we need that, that money. Um, but also because of some of the things that Matt listed in his, in his presentation, um, you know, the school aid fund being protected, some of the money that's guaranteed to go to roads and so they can't play the shell game with the money that they've been doing. And, um, you know, particularly, I've been watching the legislature, this new legislature in the last, what are we coming up on, April now? Um, and just in the last four months, they have done more, to me, damage to what we expected them to do, um, in Michigan than, um, I would have wanted them to do. And so expecting that we're going to be able to send them back with a mandate if it doesn't pass, expecting them to do something that we want them to do is not likely. Uh, as a former staffer, um, to legislator, legislator in Lansing, um, I know that this, um, current group of legislators is a lot more towards the Jace Bolger side of things than we would have liked. And so the gentleman that had the plan, um, prior to this Prop One, the reason that we have Prop One in the first place, um, that's the plan. They say there's no Plan B. Actually, Plan B is Jace Bolger's plan. And a lot of people haven't thought about that. But if we, if Prop One doesn't pass, my expectation fully is that the, the current legislature, because, um, of where they've already shown us they're going, is going to probably put into plan, into place Jace Bolger, Speaker Bolger's plan, which pretty much means nothing for schools, nothing for revenue sharing, nothing for fixing the roads. It's just nothing. And we'll be in a, a different place. But as I said, I'm a glass half-full type of individual and so voters have an opportunity to say, you know what, you guys did pass the buck to us, you didn't get it right, well, we're going to tell you where it can go. And because they've built in those constitutional protections on ga, road funding and on, um, education funding, we can at least have the expectation that those two things will be fixed and we can expect our municipalities because that funding will go to those, they can do what they need to do with the funding then. That's it.
Please, uh, thank you, Councilmember's speech. And Menachem, yes, please.
Thank you. Um, my name is Menachem Hoida and I am on the School Board from Oak Park. And I also want to mention my colleague, um, Trustee Warren, who's here as well, the Secretary of the School Board. Um, I, I wanted to talk for a second about, um, why I also support this, um, this proposal. Um, as someone who pays very close attention to education policy and how the legislature over the last, um, few years has been chipping away little by little at the school aid fund. And just a few weeks ago, um, to meet a deficit in general fund, $250 was transferred out of school aid fund into the general fund. That's money that was supposed to be going to our students and instead it went to balance out the general fund. And one of the really important parts of this, um, proposal is that it protects the school aid fund. It adds to the language that was passed in Proposal A. When Proposal A was passed, it said that money could only go for education. Um, the legislature has creatively interpreted that to mean that it could also go to pay for, um, for higher, for, for universities, um, which are certainly very important to be funded. However, universities have, um, they, they're funded by tuition. They have, um, in some cases, very, very large endowments. Those are things that public schools don't have. The funding for public schools comes from school aid fund. So it's important to protect that. But I want to also mention in terms of the, the process issue, um, that as someone who, who does watch this process and, and I think it's, it, it's great for all of us who, who serve in public office to see, um, voters who are so engaged and so informed on these issues and clearly did a lot of research. Um, the, any tax policy change, whether it's a change to sales tax or, or change to income tax, would have to go to the voters. That's what it says in our constitution. Um, and before it goes to the voters, it has to be passed by two-thirds of the legislature. And so that's, I think it's important to remember that what happened here was that before it came on the ballot, two-thirds of both Houses of the legislature voted to support this. And that was, for a lot of people, a very tough vote. Um, I want to say, just in terms of what was brought up before about a part-time legislature, what, um, I supported years ago, the idea of term limits and have come to see why that was a mistake. And the reason why that's a mistake is because the people who end up having the control and the, um, are the people who are there full-time. When we have, when that's, when our legislature, when our legislators are the ones that are there and experienced, then they're the ones who are making those decisions. When the legislators are not experienced or if they were there part-time, um, I believe what we would see is more power to the, to the, um, to the lobbyists who there's no term limits on and certainly don't work part-time, um, and, and the staffers. Um, and, and we have incredibly dedicated staffers, but they're not the ones that are accountable to the voters. So I think that's an important item to, to keep in mind. And I'd just point out, if, if one possible future view of what that would look like is to look at our federal Congress, which essentially works three days a week, um, which is about part-time, um, and see how that system works and do we want to expand on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Menachem. And Mildred Warren, I apologize that I didn't, yeah, our, our school board member. So thank you as well for all that you do. So, um, any other, oh, yeah, City Manager Tongate.
Thank, thank, thank you. I'm going to put you guys on the spot. I'm curious, you know, that we were talking about, uh, protections against the school aid fund, but are there protections in, you know, us cities, we always get forgotten about for some reason and, uh, primarily because we're in the middle of our budget process right now, which for those of you that have ever participated in a city budgeting process know how much fun that is. And I'm being very sarcastic right now. Not much fun at all. Um, are there any protections for the revenue sharing piece of this?
Uh, I, excuse me, yeah, I don't have specific knowledge on that, but, um, in terms of what goes into the transportation fund, the MTF, that, no changes will come to that. So you're still going to get whatever your Act 51 dispersment is there. So, and it'll actually increase because there's going to be an increase in the MTF. In terms of the, the funding from the sales tax that goes into the individual, um, local agency fund, that, that I'm not sure of. I didn't, obviously I, I don't focus on that. I focused on the transportation side.
Sure.
But at least on the transportation side, that, that funding will go up because your Act 51 will go up.
If I could, I, I want to impose on the Assistant City Manager, I think, just for the Oak Parkers in the room, that we think our local transportation funding, if this passes, will go up, what dollar amount is it? About a million dollars a year. Um, we also think that from a revenue sharing perspective, and, you know, I asked my question somewhat rhetorically because I know how this works, uh, we think that we may receive about $250,000 additional in revenue sharing should this pass. Unfortunately, the state has used those funds for other purposes and we would sure hope that they wouldn't do that this year if it passes. Jocelyn, are we good to move forward? Okay? Thank you, everybody. And you guys are going to stick around? If you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I'll just, well, I appreciate that. So I just want to thank Matthew for being here, uh, from MDOT. And then, uh, again, this is more of a, you know, this is a statewide proposal, so I will stick around for any questions as well. Uh, and then I know City Manager Tongate will address, uh, something specific here to Oak Park, which, uh, as a, as an Oak Park resident, I do live here in Oak Park, uh, I am supportive of this as well. As a resident, I can say that. So I will let you get into that, but just want to thank you again for being here and, and really thank you guys for putting this on.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you so much. Very much appreciate it. Well, I want to start by saying, if we could bring up the, the slideshow. Do we have a slideshow from our friends Liquor Control? Oh, it's on here? No? Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay, there we go. we go. I'm old-fashioned there. Gotcha, thank you. Okay, I want to start off, and I want to hedge this, by saying that the City of Oak Park administration, myself included as part of the administration, we do not take a partisan perspective on the issue we're about to discuss. Which, by the way, for those of you that don't know, there will be two issues on the Oak Park ballot, the roads issue, and then the mixed spirits issue. And so everything that I'm about to say is in the context of economic development. Okay? So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Okay. Okay, so economic development, marketing, Oak Park restaurants. Because for those of you that don't know, we do not allow drinking anywhere but in our restaurants. So I'm going to go through a quick history, definition of mixed spirits, economic development, key elements of the approval process, enforcement, and next steps. So, we began in the summer of 2012, which is when I became the City Manager of Oak Park, talking about an economic development function. Actually, the mayor had begun talking about this long before that, and we actually implemented the function in 2012. And for those who don't know, our Director of Community and Economic Development is Kim Maroney, right here. In 2013, City Council took it upon themselves, with advice and consent of the administration, to create what was a tavern license ordinance. And for those who don't know, a tavern license is a license to sell beer and wine only. So we created that. And to date, we have, I think, just two of our restaurants are serving beer and wine. And I see one of our owners. Could you wave? Do we have our other restaurant owner? Okay. Okay. So back when we started these conversations about economic development and using tavern licenses as an economic development tool, we decided to hire a firm to come in and do an economic development strategic plan for us. And one of the things that they mentioned in that plan was that restaurant growth was a viable strategy for increased tax revenue to the city. And part of this is that our City Council said that we cannot just continue to retract. This is at a time when we had cut $3 million plus out of our general fund budget. And it would have been real easy to just continue to retract. And some communities do that. Those are the communities that are in financial management right now, by the way. Rather than do that, we decided to plot a chart for growth. And we identified this as a way to do that, as a strategy to do that. So what does our ordinance currently do? As I said, it allows restaurants to serve beer and wine. Presumably, if this passes on our election in May, it would allow restaurants to serve beer, wine, and liquor on premises. We've determined that through land use criteria that we established in the tavern license process, that there are only 10 locations in Oak Park that would meet the land use criteria. And again, it gives the city another tool to retain and attract restaurants. It would be one of the many tools that we're using. In fact, you're going to be hearing about a very large economic development project coming up here in the city in the next 30 days, that we didn't use tavern licenses or liquor licenses at all. We used our wonderful economic development department to market our wonderful sites. And by the way, right now, when you go out to eat and you have a glass of wine with dinner, where are you going? You're not staying in Oak Park, are you? You're going to Berkeley, you're going to Detroit, you're going to Ferndale, and you're going to other locations. How about we keep our dollars right here in our own city, instead of spending it elsewhere? So why is it a necessary tool? Well, I'm not going to go through all of the reasons that the city has gone through a, some financial hardship. Those are well-publicized. But the 2008 collapse, as I mentioned a moment ago, revenue sharing decreases, and we hope to see Proposal 1 pass. And if it does, we hope to see our additional revenue sharing. And then, let's face it, multiple years, because 2008 was now a while ago. It's been multiple years of sustained decreases in taxable values related to the real estate bubble, both in commercial and residential and personal property. And in 2014, we saw our first increase in taxable values since that time. So all this time, we've been pining away and cutting and finding efficiencies, and we finally, last year, saw our first year of additional taxable value revenue. Man, most, if we were a business, we'd be out of business right now. That's about how that goes. And I wanted to show you this chart. This is from SEMCOG. This shows you the taxable values in yellow, if you can see that okay. And you see where this thing went. And only now are we starting to recover. And you can see this recovery is somewhat menial, relatively speaking. So, we're finding through our economic development strategic plan that dining out is a growing trend. And let's face it, this is a bedroom community. We're not the downtown of our region. We are a bedroom community serving our residents and visitors to our city. And we find that national growth trends support what our economic development strategic planning process entailed. And by the way, restaurants attract and help other businesses. How many times have you gone to a nearby city for dinner and a few drinks, and you notice a whole bunch more foot traffic around that restaurant, that location? That helps out the small businesses nearby. And another fact that a lot of people don't know is that you can currently purchase alcohol at various retail locations throughout the city. These are liquor stores, for the most part. We've allowed these for a long period of time. That's not for consumption on premises, but that is for retail sales. So I know the Liquor Control Commission folks are going to get up here and speak, probably more specifically, about some of these numbers. But based on some of our preliminary numbers, we think that there could be as many as 23 licenses available in the City of Oak Park. But as we said, only 10 of those locations or so, I know Kim's probably got a better number than that. Okay, so only 10 of those existing would qualify, based on some of the land use criteria we've established in local ordinance. We also know that tavern licensing has served as a retention tool. We know that our restaurants, our two at least that have them, are doing better than before they had them. And we confirmed that by, when we interviewed several of our other reputable nearby restaurant owners. And they also had, you know, the ability to serve beer and wine, increased sales, hire additional staff to accommodate more sales, help increase menu options, and as I said earlier, created more vibrancy in the area. And we also found out in our interviews from nearby restaurants that almost all of them were ServeSafe certified, which is a state certified program administered through the Michigan Restaurant Association. So Kim reached out to communities far and wide and did some interviews. And she chose a community that is very near and dear to my heart, because for those of you that know me, I grew up right by this community. But it's Hudsonville, Michigan. How many of the folks in this room know where Hudsonville, Michigan is, or have been there? More than I would have thought. Wow. You've seen the ice cream, right? That's made there, huh? Yeah, grains and ice cream. And, you know, Hudsonville is not a progressive, you know, liberal-leaning community by any stretch of the imagination. They tout themselves as a, this is according to their City Manager, a very conservative Dutch Reform community. And it was a controversial issue when they began talking about these liquor licenses in their community, because they were a dry community, just like we were. And the quote that we got, I think if you asked most people, now, they would say that the adoption of the ordinance has been a positive change, and has led to the opening of even more businesses, as I said earlier. We now have two microbreweries in the city as well. How nice would that be? A microbrewery with a restaurant, bringing more folks to our city. And that's from the City Manager. Okay, I'm going to go quickly through some of these key elements of the approval process. But I don't want anyone to be dissuaded by the fact that not only will City Council, as they usually do, have the final say on approval of these, but the administration will have done a thorough review, will have done a site plan review. Our Planning Commission will have done a site plan review and conducted a public hearing. City Council will do a site plan review and conduct a public hearing. The business license of that particular restaurant would have to be approved by both the administration and City Council. And the classy liquor license, on its own, would have to be approved by the administration and City Council. And then ultimately, the State Liquor Control Commission would have to also approve and verify that request. We also require an annual review. And if it doesn't meet the standards that we've set forth, we can ask the state to revoke the license. We ask that they have a minimum of 10 food items on their menu, and that not more than 50% of their total sales could be derived by the sale of beer, wine, spirits, and mixed spirit drinks. They must include a plan of operation. And that plan of operation includes site plan schematics of the interior of the restaurant. For example, if they wanted a small dance floor. And it cannot be located within 500 feet of a school or religious institution. So here are some of the, there we go, some of the zoning districts. I'm guessing you probably can't see this. You can get a general sense of that. So I'm going to breeze over that. But it is in our commercial districts. Okay, so enforcement. And I'm going to ask, as we get into the Q and A, that our Director of Public Safety come on up. All of the following officials have the authority and duty to enforce Michigan liquor laws, the state police, our local police, and the Oakland County Sheriff. Our Public Safety Department, for those of you that aren't aware, is great. It's a great department. And they're plenty equipped to handle alcohol-related issues. In fact, they handle them now, from people driving through our community, from all the communities around us. But what we have found, since we began issuing tavern licenses in 2013, at least with our two restaurants that have them, is that we have not been able to identify a single related incident. Not one at either of these establishments. Okay, I'm going to open it up to Q and A. But I, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a, did you want to come up and give a brief, or did you want to go to? Sure, come on up. Step by step through the application. No, I don't want to hear that.
Hi, I'm Sharon Martin. I'm the Licensing Director at the Liquor Control Commission. I wanted to let you know that, kind of like MDOT, we're not advocating one way or another whether or not spirits should be sold in your community. That is something that's up to the voters to decide. And I think that's kind of why we're here today, to answer questions on the ballot proposal that you're looking May 5th for the sale of spirits. So, relative to liquor licensing for on-premise businesses, there's a quota system that's established. And it's one license for every 1,500 in population in the governmental unit. So that is what the commission looks at when we get a request for a new license. Again, it's all contingent upon the approval by the local legislative body, who in this case would be the Oak Park City Council. They would have the final say and recommendation on whether or not they wish to have a business operating a liquor license within their local unit of government. So, you know, they are the key people that make that decision, whether or not they want a particular business be open in the community. So if you have questions regarding the liquor license process, or how it works with the Sunday sales ballot proposal, feel free to ask any questions.
Let me actually start off, if you don't mind. So I wanted to talk about, maybe I'm skipping way ahead and assuming the worst. Let's just do that for a moment. Revocation of a license. And I talked about, if City Council determines that they would like to revoke a license, how does that happen?
Anytime during the year, if the commission receives a request from the local unit of government requesting revocation of a license, the commission will honor that request and actually give them a hearing in front of the commission. And what really they're looking for is whether or not the licensee was afforded due process at the local level, to make sure that the licensee was, had an opportunity at the local level to confront any adverse witnesses, and to have questions from the local government and the unit as to why that revocation action is being taken. If the commission finds that that's all been granted to the licensee, due process was provided, the commission will proceed with a request from the local for revocation. Ultimately, it may end up going to a court of competent jurisdiction, if there's still a dispute between the licensee and the local governmental unit. But the commission takes the input of the local governmental units very seriously. And we know that you're not going to take that type of action unless it's absolutely necessary. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you could stay on here. Do we, do other folks want to say something, or do we want to just go back to the Q and A here? Come on up.
Yes, hello. My name is Jason Cato. I'm a district supervisor with the Enforcement Division with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. One of the things I also wanted to add is, is when the licensee puts in the application, or applicant puts one in, we actually do the investigation. So we actually look at the applicant, we look at their background, we look at the type, if they're going to be licensed or qualified, what they're going to be doing. We come out, we do diagrams, we have a whole process of what we go through. We have two different phases, I like to say. We have a licensing part, we get them in, and we're also responsible for the enforcement. In regards to what Ms. Martin was saying, for show causes, if the local community comes out and finds out that this particular licensee or establishment is a nuisance, they can always put in a request for a show cause hearing. We can look at it, the commission will look at it, to see whether or not they violate any public safety, health, and welfare. We have about 20 investigators, but we work in conjunction with the local governmental units with the police very extensively. So there's a lot of enforcement that comes with that. I just wanted to just say that, and if you have any other questions, you know, feel free to ask.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's open it up to questions, if we could get folks. Good evening.
Steve Gold, I've been a resident of Oak Park for almost 60 years. The issue of liquor in Oak Park has come up multiple times during I've lived here. And I think I probably speak for a lot of people when I say that the reason it's been defeated in the past is this fear that if we allow liquor, we're going to have bars, places that their only business is really selling alcohol and serving it. And that has really kept a lot of people voting against it. So I don't think I'm worried about going to the Sahara, for example, or Jade Palace, and having a drink with, you know, a business lunch or something like that. I think the concern that a lot of people have, and I think you actually addressed this, but I want to make sure it's real clear, is that what we don't want is establishments whose primary job is serving liquor, i.e. the bars. But I think you've already addressed that, and it's good to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that is true. I wanted to, I did say that, but I want to talk about that a little bit more. The ordinance that's on the books for tavern licenses, and we have to assume that those same restrictions would apply, this would fit very nicely into that ordinance, let's say, do not allow for bars. They do not allow for nightclubs. They do not allow for strip clubs. They do not allow for any establishment that is not, their primary business is serving food as a restaurant. Okay?
My name is, my name is Annie Williams, and I've been a resident of Oak Park since 1976. And the reason why I was really interested in moving into Oak Park was because of the schools and our family city. Now with the liquor coming into Oak Park, it really does upset me, because we're having an issue right now with our young people, and where we have these restaurants and stuff like this, we're taking the kids, seeing they're able to see this, that I feel that is not appropriate. Now, have you looked into, okay, we go to the park. Every year, my church come into Oak Park to have their picnic. And based on that, why they like that is because there's no alcohol in the park. So I hope there will never be an alcohol in the park up there. Because we've got to have, if we're going to have to move forward and make some correction, as an adult, we can get alcohol. There's no problem of getting it. But we're going to have to set some guidelines also. Are there any other methods that you can think of that could bring revenues into the city other than this alcohol? Because even with me, when I go out to eat, I don't appreciate seeing the alcohol served all around me. I don't like that. But like I say, can you think of something else that we could think of to move Oak Park in another direction of developing it rather than alcohol?
Well, let me, let me respond to that. And if the folks up here want to respond as well, I mean, first, say how much I appreciate your opinion, and I respect your opinion. To answer your question, I'd like to get a chunk of that 200-some million that the state's going to get to their general fund, if we could do that. That's one way. I'm being funny. Sorry. As I mentioned, this is, in our economic development quiver, this is one arrow in our quiver. And as I mentioned, Director Maroni is working on another economic development project, for example, where the issue of alcohol is where the issue of alcohol is not even part of the conversation. We are using other tools to attract that business, that particular business. To me, the idea that allowing restaurants to serve alcohol as a part of their business model does not deter from the quality of life in our city. And as I mentioned in my presentation, there's not a single example from the two licensed restaurants that we have where that is the case. And also, you know, there's plenty of communities out there that, that have issues with late-night drinking, people on, you know, drinking on the streets, whatever it may be, fighting, whatever it may be. One of the side effects of being a community lodged in between other communities that already allow this is that we still deal with those things, but again, they're passing through our community to get to their homes. So I don't know if you guys want to throw your own answer in there, but Kim, I don't know if you want to add something to that? But does that, you don't seem satisfied.
Another thing I want to bring up too, when I was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was mentioned something about the jazz music. How would that be? Would that be out on the streets where other people can hear it, or this is going to be detained on the inside?
You say, I'm sorry, you said jazz music?
Something about jazz music and the wine.
Oh, jazz in the park?
Not in the park, no. It seemed like it was coming around Nine Mile. Seemed like it's coming around Nine Mile or something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, thank you. You're talking about sidewalk cafes, I think.
Some, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you still have residents in the Nine Mile area.
Yep.
And I mean, I think you have all, now they're 10 o'clock. So if you're going to go past that, what time are people's going to get a chance to relax and rest? We don't need that type of environment.
Again, I respect your opinion. The, the issue of sidewalk cafes, which you know, we already allow sidewalk cafes in our community. They have, they are subjected to a whole litany of land use requirements, up to and including that they have to be in line with our noise ordinance. So if they're out there blasting music and disrupting the whole neighborhood, you can bet that one of our public safety officers is going to be on the scene pretty quick. There's a very high standard that we ask that our sidewalk cafe operators maintain. So Kim, I don't know if you want to.
Well, I still say, I moved here because of the, in 1976, we didn't have this. So it doesn't sound too good for me, but it's just my opinion, is all I have to say. Thank you for giving me a chance to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi, by the way, my name is Jim Weiskopf, and I've lived here since 1977. But I spent the first three or so years of my life in a place called Margose Park, Illinois, which is an old suburb on the west side of Chicago. As soon as prohibition ended, our town went wet. It's before my time, but I know that. But many of the other towns around us stayed dry. So these people would come into our town, Friday and Saturday nights especially, drink at the, we had bars. Drink at the bars, purchase alcohol, whatever, at the restaurants or wherever. But on Friday and Saturday night, everybody's drunk tank was full. Every, every local police force dealt with the same number of DRIs. But our town made the money. It's just simple economics.
Yeah.
They're going to drink one way or another, you might as well make something on it.
Say that, that might be a campaign slogan there somewhere. I don't know. Makes sense. Anybody else want to comment or ask a question? Good evening, sir.
Ed Bass, Kipling Street. It's about time.
I thought you were talking about the lights out there, but you're not. Okay, gotcha. On both fronts. Good evening.
Hi, Xena Atisha from Sahara Restaurant. And I am sure that you all know who I am. I just wanted to start by saying I welcome, and I'm happy that we're having this town hall meeting. And from the restaurant perspective, and I don't know if many of you know the ordinance. I mean, I went through it, and we, I've had, I do have the, a C-class liquor license already in escrow right now for another location that we are opening in Sterling Heights. So from the state of Michigan and Sterling Heights and for Oak Park, the paperwork is immense. It is, you go through city management, you go through council, there's voting, there's the planning commission. I can't even tell you, they get into your life story. They know you, your children, your finances, your bank accounts. You have to tell them everything, and your criminal background, and your fingerprints. And they're not passing out licenses to just anybody. You go through a lot to get a license. You have to be qualified. And then there's a requirement on the state level to be TAM certified, which is tips in alcohol management. So that means that you go through a course where you, you begin to recognize when a person has had too much to drink. And there has to be a TAM certified person at all times, on the premises, to be able to tell when a person has had too much. And you learn that when they drink before they eat, how it affects the body. If they've eaten before they drank, how it affects the body. So there's, there's things that you will learn through that. I also have a serve safe license. I also have employees with serve safe licenses that know about food and food bacterial illnesses. So there is so much happening in the restaurant world that we are learning and constantly being educated on through emails, through the National Restaurant Association, through the Michigan Restaurant Association, through constant food shows, through constant updates. The Michigan Liquor and Beverage Association that we're becoming a member of now that we have a tavern license. And again, being a restaurant, and the fact that Sahara has been in business for 34 years, people come to Sahara for the food, period. If people are going to drive into Oak Park to come to Sahara, they're coming for the food. They're not coming for the beer and wine. They're coming for the food, and now the beer and wine is an option on the menu, just like chicken wings. It's an option on the menu now. If they're, if they're coming to our restaurant, it's because we've been, we've been open this long without liquor. And I'm not bragging about the restaurant, I don't cook. I'm bragging because it tells you a lot about our menu. It tells you a lot about our food. But the fact of the matter is, there's competition. There are more and more Mediterranean restaurants opening. I'm not going to speak for other restaurants because I don't own an American Grill or a Coney Island. But if you take a look around and just through your head, and since so many of you have lived in Oak Park for so long, and my husband's owned this restaurant here so long, what are your options here in Oak Park? So if you do want to go out to eat right now, what are your options if you were going to stay in Oak Park and have dinner today? What are your options? So if you want to have a steak dinner, what are your options? So you must almost leave the city every time. And, and that's unfortunate. So now you're handicapping the city. You've, you've basically said, because I don't want anyone to be able to come to Oak Park and have a drink, I'm not allowing my entire city to have, have this one single restaurant. Because today, in today's world, even Comerica Bank, we approached them for a loan, said, because you don't have a liquor license, we won't even think about giving you a loan. Because a liquor license is also collateral for a loan. You don't, we don't own the building. What are we going to offer them? Tables and chairs? So that's what it is. There's a lot of things to look at that maybe a lot of people don't understand what's happening in restaurants today. And they will go somewhere else. They will look somewhere else that can offer them a drink. How about anniversaries, birthday parties? We're not telling you that people are going to get drunk. They're not. They're coming, and, and just by, by the way the ordinance is written, 51% are more food items, 40 or more seats. The way the ordinance is written here, they cannot, that's why there's no problems. Because nothing will happen. And as long as everyone's educated, and your workers are educated, everything will be fine. And then you'll see more restaurants open, then you'll have more coffee shops and more ice cream places. And, and then you'll see a dessert shop open where you can leave and go have a cake and coffee after you've done eating. There's just more chances. And then you'll start seeing commercial properties grow. Because wouldn't that be amazing for the first restaurant to be able to come into Oak Park? They'll be, they'll jump all over Oak Park to have, to be the first one to have, to grab a chain restaurant, to be able to come into Oak Park. Because now you have, they'll be just jumping all over that option, that idea to come in here.
Councilmember's speech, I know you wanted to say something.
As we consider which way to vote on this, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, I know that this has been something that Oak Park residents have had to consider in the past. But what hasn't happened in the past was, we didn't have, we weren't in this position of having the, the city manager and the economic development manager that we have now. Because right now, we have a team of administration that is definitely forward-thinking and has done a lot of work on the, the language. So that it's, it's helping the city council to be very restrictive in the way that, like Eric mentioned, there is only a few, I think 20, how many is it, 23? 23? If, that, that's the max number of allowable licenses. But also, council has that oversight. And also, you know, we've done a very good job as council of dictating, or deciding how the mission should go and how the vision of the city should go. So we've revamped, you know, the vision of the city. If, if an organization or a business comes in and is contrary to that vision, and is contrary to the ordinance, and nothing fits, then they don't, they don't come to Oak Park, period. So if this, if that's something that can help you along, you know, whichever way you decide, I want you to consider that. Because we certainly are in a different position than we would have been 15, 20 years ago. Definitely, you know, from 1977 to now, we're definitely in a better position. But Oak Park as a community is going into a different position than we were, you know, even two years ago, from when I got on the council. So I want you to consider that. But also, you know, there have been, because I have, you know, worked at large in the state, I know there have been a number of opportunities to come to Oak Park from restaurants and people in business. They wanted to come to Oak Park because they might have grown up in Oak Park. They've lived in other states and come back to Michigan, and they wanted to be in Oak Park. And they didn't choose Oak Park. Because we didn't have some of the things that would have made them comfortable as a business. One of them was a liquor license. Not all restaurants want to necessarily serve liquor, but that, as Mrs. Atisha mentioned, that is a limiting factor to things like financing or things like that. So we want to be open to business as well as open to community and family, which is part of our vision as a, as a city. And so we don't want to be exclusionary in that way. So there's something to consider when you're considering the vote.
I wanted to pose a question to our folks at the Liquor Control Commission. And I wanted to clarify the, on the tavern license side, and let's start there. I wanted to underscore some, a point that Councilmember's speech made about the fact that our city council, in recognition of many of the concerns that many of our residents have, have chosen to be more restrictive than the state law. And so I wanted you to talk about that just a little bit in terms of what does that mean? We've gone from, just from a land use perspective alone, we are, we've got to be one of the most restrictive out there.
I guess basically, the only way I can describe it is because it does come to the local governmental unit first. They go through their ordinances, they make the decision on whom they want to come into their, to your city to operate a business. So they're going to go through their various planning stages and their ordinances. And before they even recommend approval to have it come to the commission, they're, they've already vetted out the applicant 120%. So I think you can, it's safe to say, and I get the vibe here, that, that they're all very proactive in businesses within the community. They're going to take a hard and fast look at everybody that comes in to the community and asks for a license. So I, I get the feeling that you can be assured that when we get an application, it's going to go through all the proper steps. So they initially have the first right of refusal, if you want to put it that way, whether or not a business can open up for liquor sales in the city. A couple of other things I wanted to add real quick. I know we talked about the revenue sharing portion of this. I don't know if you realize that 55% of all the liquor license fees go back to the local municipality. And that's for the purpose of enforcing the Liquor Control Code. So, you know, when the licensees pay their renewal fee, we're going to give 55% back to the community, and that's going to be for law enforcement. But I didn't want to also exclude our Enforcement Division, who also works on a daily basis to enforce the laws of the state. If the citizens had any concerns they feel were being addressed at the local level or any other level, they're able to come to our Enforcement Division and make their complaints heard. So that's another option. The one last thing I wanted to mention is the, the training that's required for a new licensee. The statute, and very wisely, the legislature put in a provision that any new business has to complete a server training course that's approved by the commission. So if Sharon's restaurant comes in to the city of Oak Park and I get a license, I'm going to be required upon issuance of my license to provide certification that I have employees that are trained for signs of intoxication, sales to minors. They're going to be able to recognize those signs. And if they don't complete that training, then the commission has the right to pull that license.
I just wanted to say something from the enforcement side. There are a lot of rules and regulations and laws and everything that we have to enforce. And one of the main rules that we have is that the licensee has to adhere to all local rules, regulations, and ordinances. So they can get a violation if they don't adhere to that particular rule. I can go into all the ones, use some benefit, selling to a minor, and I can stand up here for hours. And it's, and it's a lot. But one of the things I like to reiterate is that we work hand-in-hand with your local police. Something that they might not be able to handle if it's too complicated in regards to a licensee being in there because maybe somebody else came in there and wanted to start using that license for their use and benefit, and it's not our licensee. But then we'll have our investigators go in and do an investigation, and it must be in a violation, and work from there. Also too, it's also very important to realize that every complaint that comes into our Enforcement Division gets worked. So if someone calls in and says, hey, you know what, they're selling to minors, then we're going to send an investigator out. So that's another thing. If you have any questions, Phil, just, just ask. Because I can, I can go on for a while.
Probably seen a little bit. Okay, we have a question.
I have a question for our city manager.
Yes.
In regards to this proposal, if it passed, how much can we expand taking in new businesses in Oak Park in terms of development? I mean, where would these businesses go? They go to vacant units, buildings? Or would you be building in Oak Park for some of this to occur?
That's a great question. And I, I'm trying to bring up this zoning map here, I don't know. So, can we get that? So first of all, we're going to encourage, there we go. As we are right now, we're going to encourage development in all of our commercial districts. And you can see the, you know, doesn't matter what color it is, but all the color-coded areas here are, you know, our primary commercial districts. And, you know, are we going to promote those spaces and the vacant spaces and the spaces in between? Yes, and we are doing that now. But someone mentioned, I think it was our Sahara owner over here, mentioned that, you know, we love to promote our local restaurants and Jade Palace and Sahara, for example, who have a tavern license and others. But it would be nice to have a combination of corporate restaurants. How many corporate restaurants do you see in the city of Oak Park right now? Very, very few, if any, right? We have a couple of fast food chains. You ever wonder why that is the case? Many, and I'm not saying all, but certainly many of these corporations, and I'm not endorsing any of these, but, you know, an Applebee's, which would not be a wonderful score for us, let's say, maybe. But an Applebee's has a corporate model that includes a Class C license. And when they're looking at locations, do you think they're willing to go through all the rigmarole in this city when they can just locate right across Greenfield and Southfield, for example? Probably not.
So how close can businesses be to the residential area then, in terms of your ordinances or whatever?
Let me go back to that. Well, most of our commercial is adjacent to residential, first and foremost. But they, our, there we go. Our licensed establishments cannot be within 500 feet of a school or religious institution. So there's no way to protect against, you know, an establishment being, a restaurant that is being next to a residential district because everywhere you look, that's what, that's what it is out there. So it's almost without fail adjacent.
Well, just as long as we enforce the noise ordinance, maybe we can live with it.
Very well said.
She left. I just wanted to, to tell everyone to keep in mind that Oak Park is not very large. So just by our sheer size alone, we would not have a liquor establishment on every other corner. And it has to be within 500 yards of, or of a school or a church. And we have plenty of those in Oak Park. And also, please keep in mind that Bagger Days and Outback wanted to move to Oak Park, but because we could not allow them to sell liquor, they chose not to. So that's quite a bit of revenue that we missed out on. It was money for the city, which would have also increased our property value. When more businesses move here, we are looked upon as a, a better city, and we would attract more businesses. So I would have loved for an Applebee's or an Outback or a Bagger Day to have moved to Oak Park. And personally, myself, when I meet with my friends and we discuss going out for dinner, I never think of going to Oak Park. It's sad to say. We always go out of Oak Park. And I would like to have my friends meet me in my hometown and sit down and have dinner here.
Thank you. Come on up. Kim. Please, everybody.
From an economic development standpoint, when you go out to a restaurant, you typically spend for every dollar at the restaurant, another $2 at another local retail establishment. Think of the dollars that that would mean coming into our community and the ability for us to attract these retail stores that today we can't get. A good, strong restaurant at a location in a commercial complex is a good anchor that helps us to attract those other retail establishments. So aside from being able to attract the restaurants, we can also attract some more retail establishments in our community that we're lacking a lot of today. And I think back, as I was thinking of this presentation today, of a community, I don't know if anybody is familiar with a community called Oxford, north of here. If you went through Oxford 20 years ago, it was a ghost town. It started with adding a few restaurants there, three of them, that all had liquor licenses, and started to bring people in. From there, you added some retail establishments. It became a destination for people. Then a subdivision sprung up, a golf course, a Myers', several other establishments that were in the community that brought tax revenue and made all the taxable values in that community go up, in a place that people wanted to live in. So think of those things. It's not just the small picture of serving alcohol by the glass at a restaurant. It's everything else that comes with it.
Other questions, comments, concerns, recommendations, where we can find more money for the budget process this year, anything you have out there, we'll take it. Okay. Director Cooper, do you want to add a couple of things?
Sure.
There he is, folks. Look at that guy.
I'm back here at the, the rear here. I know about a year ago, we sat around with similar town hall meetings and we had these discussions and one of the...
That was two years ago, I'm sorry. It's been two, can you believe it? Two years ago.
Two years ago, I'm sorry. We've had these same conversations, and one of the common questions that had come up was public safety. You know, how is this going to in fact, impact our ability to deliver services to our restaurants? Are we going to be, you know, too distracted or as far as too encumbered with chasing, you know, disorderly subjects, drunken intoxicated people, that we wouldn't be able to provide the services that we are known for here in Oak Park? And I, like I said, I spoke to quite a few colleagues around the areas and did my own informal research, and I stand here, you know, 100% confident in letting you know that by bringing a Class C liquor license into the city of Oak Park, I don't have any worries that it's going to impact the services that you're currently receiving. And hopefully, we've, we've established our reputation here in Oak Park as being a very safe city, and I don't see that changing. So like I said, I'm not the least bit concerned about any extra added workload or any negatives that would detract away from our ability to deliver the services, so.
Thank you, sir. Any last words, anything? Okay.
Once again, like my colleagues have said, we're not advocating it any other way. I mean, if you want to have it, fine. If you don't, it's really about the voters. Actually, from my standpoint, that just, it's just another city I have to do undercover operations for. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Once again, we, we try to, not try, we, we work in conjunction with the locals. It's really up to, it's really up to you guys. So whatever you put into place, we're going to enforce our rules and regulations plus yours. So that's all I have to say.
My name is Sarah Weber, and I'm part of the licensing manager for Liquor Control. And one of the things, as I was looking back through the changes that you've made throughout history, I can see one thing, and that's that you don't do anything lightly here. You take everything into consideration on a yearly basis since 1936. I have my folder here that kind of outlines everything that you've done here. And so my comment is just this, I think whatever decision you make at this time is the one that's right for you at this point. Because like I said, you don't do anything lightly here, you take it into consideration. So we are here to support whatever decision you make.
Representative, one more comment before we sign off.
So just want to kind of wrap things up a little bit. And again, encourage everyone to get out to vote. No matter how you feel on both of these proposals, we want everyone to get out to vote, as many people as possible. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends. We're usually pretty good about that. I love, like I said, I love representing this community. We're an engaged community. We're an educated community. We care about what goes on in this area. So I would love to see as many people as possible voice their opinions on both of these proposals, and then encourage all of you to tell your friends and neighbors, we do have another forum coming up April 21st. Okay, we can put the slide up. April 21st, it's going to be same as this, it's going to be the same town hall. So those of you that were here, you know, feel free to come back again if you have any questions. You can bring those questions at that time, but it's, we're going to have representatives from the same organizations here. But again, I want to encourage everyone, do your research, ask questions, reach out to my office. Again, I'm happy to help no matter what. I know city manager Tungate, our mayor, our council members, all care deeply about the community, and, and that's why they have chosen to serve this community. And so they care about what's important to you and want to answer any questions that you have. I'll do a, a little shameless plug. If you do have any questions regarding state issues, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, I am having a coffee hour at the Berkeley Public Library. So every month, we're going to hold coffee hours and we're going to rotate. Last month, we had one here in Oak Park, and I know I mentioned that at our, at one of the city council meetings. And we will have coffee hours every month and encourage you to come out and voice your opinion. And if you can't make it there, please reach out to me, go on my website, call our office, whatever we can do to help. But again, May 5th, make sure that your voice is heard. And I want to thank city manager Tungate and thank the city of Oak Park for letting me work with them on, on this town hall meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Representative Jason, Sharon, Sarah, and Matt, and my staff, city council members, mayor, and others. Thank you for coming, and we will see you soon. If you have questions, feel free to ask my office. Thank you very much and have a good rest of your night.